We have no action coming out of executive session, so we've reached that portion of the meeting where we welcome public comment. Let me remind you, it's two minutes. No personal comments. And we try and be positive. Please speak into the microphone, but even if it's heard in the room, it cannot always be heard on our live streaming.
I need to find your socks.
All right, maybe you didn't hear me. Everybody got ready? And I'll take your advice. You're limited to two minutes for public comment, and please speak directly into the microphone, because even if you think your voice carries in the room, it doesn't always carry out your live streaming. A lot of people do watch it, huh? So, anyone would like to address the board at this time? There we go.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here tonight to address the board's resolution, I think, which I'm sorry, I just got here, just put my glasses on to try to read on the agenda, which I think is here with respect to the resolution that you're going to consider for doing the study on the PLA that has been proposed by the trades for the high school renovation project. So I just want to come here to just briefly state the following. I strongly encourage this board to give serious consideration and adopt that resolution to facilitate the study for the following reasons. Very well, you're going to see that there could be anywhere between three and six million dollars or more in tax dollar savings for the project. In addition, it will allow our kids to be given potentially a career opportunity through their apprenticeship program. Without a PLA, there will be no apprenticeship for our children with respect to that kind of opportunity for employment. Additionally, these people are local people who live and pay taxes in Kingston. Their kids go to Little League, their kids are a product of the school district, they volunteer for many initiatives, and I would respectfully request that, given their contribution to this community, given the fact that they do live and work here, pay taxes, and you have to pay prevailing wage for this project, you give serious consideration and use a PLA. And with respect to the apprenticeship program, I've spoken at length with Superintendent Padalino, Superintendent Chuck Corey over at FOCs. We're trying to put together, we've had meetings between the trades representatives and those school officials, for purposes of ensuring that there could be an apprenticeship program going forward, you know, without this project, for our kids who might not necessarily be interested in pursuing a higher education. So in summary, thank you for the opportunity. Again, I strongly encourage you to please just adopt this resolution to facilitate, okay, that allocation for purposes of serious consideration of a PLA, because it's not only in the best interest of the taxpayers, and obviously the men and women who work within the trades, it's in the best interest of our children. Thank you very much.
Mr. Landy?
For the record, my name is Charlie Landy, and I reside at 20 Allmont Street in the city of Kingston. President Nora Sheer and Superintendent Paul Padalino, thank you for the privilege of the floor. I want to talk about the connection between local union project labor agreements, PLAs, and Kingston City School District property taxes, as they pertain to the upcoming Kingston High School $139 million renovation project. When a school board authorizes a $139 million renovation project, shouldn't they be concerned with the district's ability to pay off those bonds in the form of school property taxes? And if the school board could help by writing into the contract a PLA agreement that would be beneficial to local taxpayers, who would get their fair share of the construction jobs, shouldn't they do that? That's what PLAs do. I personally receive a pension from local 825 of the operating engineers as a result of PLAs, and that pension helps me pay my Kingston City School District taxes. This is a circuit of necessity, where the Kingston City School District authorizes a $130 million project and writes into its contract a PLA so that the district's constituents, the people who pay the school property taxes, share in a part of the proceeds. What is the alternative to a defining PLA? Is that a contractor from Oshkosh, Wisconsin, with a job, gets the job and brings all his cousins and relatives to share in the wealth of the contract, none of which pay any school taxes to the Kingston City School District? What's wrong with that picture? I want to strongly urge you to vote, there aren't too many issues that the mayor and I agree on, but clearly this is one of them. I want to strongly urge you to vote for the PLA as part of the contract so that the local labor share, share in the proceeds of the monumental project, to help enable them to help pay their local school taxes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sheer. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board at this time? Okay. And I guess we can move on to Superintendent Shufield.
Thank you, Mr. Sheer. Well, last meeting, we had some very good news about the JFK playground, and of course at this meeting, I have some very bad news about the JFK playground. After our last meeting, we had a few glitches with the contractor or with the people who were providing the playground. We initially were told that we would be shipped prior to the December 6 date, we would have it on site. Then it was December 11, it would be shipped, and now we're being told that the playground itself won't be shipped until after the holidays. So it will be on site sometime in early January, which obviously puts us in a bad situation for installation. So we are, right now, we're still holding tight, hoping that January shipping day of the week would happen, and really, if we wanted to have a true community build project, we would probably be looking at the first leap of April to do that correctly. So our highs on this from early, this from late November, started to a low of the last couple of weeks when we ran into this issue with the manufacturer as far as the delivery of the actual playground. So we're continuing to talk to them, but at this point, I would say we're probably looking at a, you know, late winter, early spring installation.
Question is, just prior to the first week of April, just before the spring break?
We were hoping maybe to do it during the spring break, but that might be a good opportunity to get the community involved, thirty minutes spring break, and when students come back from spring break to a nice new playground at a time when they can use it.
Any other questions? Okay.
Just one other thing before we get out of KSQ and VBL. Mr. Olson had a conversation with one of the solar providers that we've been talking about, the board's been talking about, that we were supposed to have a meeting with the other solar provider that we were discussing yesterday. Obviously, that was, that didn't happen because of the weather, but I will ask Mr. Olson just to give us a brief summary of what happened with the first meeting, and then we'll come back after our next meeting and be able to have really a better, more lengthy discussion and comparison on the proposal.
Thank you. We spoke the other day, actually, I met with the solar provider along with Robin Sardanas from VBL and Scott Pilgi from the architectural company, KSQ. The provider was called SolarCity. We're also going to meet with Monolith Solar, who, again, as Dr. Padalino said, we were supposed to meet with yesterday, but because of the weather, they did not make the trip. In any case, the funding, both, I have spoken briefly with Monolith already, both sides seem to agree that there's a lot of funding out there, and that the funding is going to take a different shape starting in the spring. And that shape is going to probably require us to want to move in the early spring toward doing something with this if we can. SolarCity has done projects already at SUNY Cortland, some of you may be familiar with that campus, with Orange County, and several other entities that you keep in mind. Monolith also has a list of projects they've completed, which, again, as Dr. Padalino said, after we meet with them, which is scheduled for next week, we will come back with sort of a comparison of the two, of the two companies. Both of the companies agree that, both companies would like to do something on the ground. That's the preferred approach, rather than to install things on top of buildings, although that's possible as well. We don't really have 20 acres on the ground that we can dedicate to this kind of thing. Twenty acres is what it would take to actually provide all our electric for this, for our entire plant. So there's also a possibility of getting, acquiring, or leasing acreage in order to create such an installation on the ground. These firms, by the way, do the permitting, the design, the engineering, and the installation of the whole thing. It's from soup to nuts, and essentially, all we have to do is agree to buy electricity from them for 20 years at a rate that's established upfront. Of course, to agree to buy electricity for 20 years, it requires a bit of a leap of faith that electricity rates are going to continue to go up for the next 20 years, à la gasoline and pretty much everything else that we're aware of. It may not be a great leap of faith, but in any case, it is a bit of a leap. So I think that this is going to be a pretty interesting option for us to consider, and again, after next week's meeting with Monolith, we'll be able to draw these two companies' offers or proposals side by side to see what the puts and takes are. One of them might be that one of the companies expressed that they might be willing to buy a piece of land and actually install it on there. Of course, our rate for electricity might be higher in that case if they would have additional cost. The other one wasn't as fast to consider that kind of possibility, but who knows? So we'll have, I think, a little more on this on January 7.
Question, Mr. Olson? Mr. Shunsley? And Director Shufield?
I made a suggestion to Mr. Olson a couple of months ago, that perhaps the school district and other school districts could cooperate with the Resource Recovery Agency and use the closed landfills as a site for solar farms. I know they're doing that. The town of Sopas has had a solar panels next to their town hall for the last seven years, and they're installing solar panels at that landfill in, I forget the name, it's down in the southern part of the town of Sopas, and they'll be providing 100% of the power to the, to the town through those solar panels. Just as a point of reference, Mr. Landy, who's just spoke, is a board member of the Resource Recovery Agency, so there may be some synergy in pursuing that. I don't know if the Resource Recovery Agency Board would be willing to do that, but I do know that the landfill behind the mall is 29 acres, and they have a landfill in, a closed landfill in New Falls, and they have a closed landfill in the town of Lloyd, and many of the towns also have closed landfills of various acreages. So, and that's also a way of entering into an intermunicipal agreement that would provide savings to the district and to the other agency. It may be falling under tax.
Mr. Olson, you want to address that?
Yes, I wish I'd addressed that earlier. We approached the Resource Recovery Agency about that, about the landfill behind the plaza there, and they told us that the county is considering using it for exactly the same purpose. So we'll see what happens there, but that may, they may be in fact in competition with us to get some of the dollars that are going to be out there in state. So we'll keep up with them to make sure that they, that in case they lose interest in that, that we can do something with them. But right now, they're thinking of going, going single.
Okay, but as I say, the rez of the landfill, permanent, as well, is probably why they could.
I had a similar question, but it was not quite as comprehensive. So just covered it. Grab her chat.
And I was along with that, but again, is there a possibility of doing a combination of field and some roof?
Yes.
Which might cut down on the amount of acreage that you'd need to do that?
Yes, there is. We could do, we could just do roofs. I mean, I don't think we have 20 acres of roof that we could do it, but we could, we don't have to do a project of the size that would meet all of our electricity needs. We could do as much as we can do on our own properties and be satisfied with that. You know, they would rather, they say economically it's better on the ground. Obviously, that means that we'll get a better price overall for electricity from them if their economics are superior. But they, actually, the SolarCity company had looked at our buildings and proposed some roof sites that we talked about, at Chambers was one of them, and a couple others. So, yeah, that is a possibility.
The second question, on the cutoff, we keep talking about the money, we're saying, June, you know, if we don't do something by June, then we may lose out on it. Where are we, where are they getting that from, Michael?
Well, there's a, you know, they have changed their story a bit, these vendors. There happens to be, however, a new program out in New York State, and they're calling it, sorry, it's a megawatt block program. And it sounds like, in fact, it is kicking off in the early spring, like this guy said it was. And it sounds like it's going to, they're trying to get outside investors involved in this as well, so there's less, less state money being put into these programs. And I didn't actually fully, I don't know if you fully, you didn't fully explain, or I didn't fully understand it, but it sounds like the early institutions that get involved will have a better, a better rate in all of this than if you get involved later. So I look forward to analyzing his thoughts a little more closely, and also quizzing the next provider to see if I can get a little bit more understanding about how that's supposed to work.
Thank you. I do, Mike, is my servant involved with the Silver Company?
Yes.
I guess I look forward to the report on SolarCity. And now?
Last thing on my report for tonight is a presentation from KSQ, VBL, and the Kingston High School Second Century Project. So I'll turn it over to Armon Quadrini, our head architect.
Thank you, Dr. Padalino, and it's a pleasure to be before the school board and talk about our update for the work that's been going on throughout the whole year for the HHS. I'm joined tonight by my partner, Scott Pilgi, and also Robin Sardanas from VBL. She's a project manager at the U of R, and she's been one of the common threads that's been following us through the whole process.
And Armon, can I just interrupt more, and I think it's appropriate that we're having this presentation today, because today's the one-year anniversary of the approval of the Second Century Project. So last year, there's nothing we are having, so today's the anniversary. Isak, go ahead.
We have about 35 slides in the deck tonight, and I'm going to try to go at a pretty fast pace, and if you have any questions, we'd like you to slow down and talk in more detail. I'm happy to do that. A note about process, we have the updated campus plan. We'd like to share with you how the typical academy has laid out. And then finally, some example on instruction spaces, and we prepared 3D snapshots, general classroom, makerspace, science labs, and then the core common areas for the new south entry, cafeteria, and library. We have conducted over 50 stakeholder meetings this calendar year, and I just want to thank the principal Kurt Reinhardt and the vice principal Andrew Schuber. We had, we asked again and again and again to go back to see the teachers and faculty and staff, and this is really an important process. You know, putting all that data in helps us tailor the building to make a custom building that works for your program. I'm not going to read down the list, but we think we met with just about everybody in the high school that will be affected by the bond, and all that data's been folded back into the plan. The site plan looks very similar to the one that you saw in June and the one before that in the springtime. In the lower left, we're tracking to add about 75 new parking spaces on the campus. We're hoping to add a few more than that, but they're not finalized, so we start with the conservative number for this evening. Again, you're familiar with the proposed business center addition to the fieldhouse, the east and the west classroom wing additions to the Salzman Building, the new south entrance, the new synthetic turf field, and then we've been working with Brenier and Arios to update and finalize site safety, security, and vehicle access. Your transportation directors had direct input into this plan, your security director and so on. So we, we're feeling excited and confident that we have a consensus-built plan that's meeting all the needs of the program. In terms of the academy locations, there are four academies that are proposed. The ninth grade academy is intended to be a single-story academy at the ground floor on the west side, on the O'Reilly Street side, and then upstairs would be a duplex configuration for the second academy, and then the third and the fourth academy in the east, new construction wing. And those instruction wings straddle Salzman, where our core common areas, library, main security, cafeteria, and so on are located. We reimagined the layout of the academies from when we met last in June. And we had a lot of input from the stakeholders, we also had a lot of input from the state. We're working through the building aid unit calculations with them, and the final diagram that we came up with, and again, the idea is that we're having main access from Salzman, if you envision that on the lower part of the slide. We make our way into the main public space of each house or academy. We proposed a makerspace, which is an interdisciplinary learning space that supports multiple curriculums, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The vertical circulation floor gets us up and down, and then the administrative unit for each academy, science labs, general classrooms, and then we always make sure that there's an adult workspace or teacher's workspace at the other end of the corridor. So if we look now at translating that diagram into a final plan, again, this is the main entrance into the house. You have your core circulation, the major space, the gang, science labs, two upstairs and two down. The pink are the general classrooms. We have a special ed classroom out at the end, and then the teacher's workstation and the administrative group in that area. So there's a lot of detail in the plan. We've thought through the common bathrooms for the students, there's adult toilet rooms on every floor. The offices are spread out so that they're strategically located so that they can observe students at all times. There are no sort of areas where we would expect to have students on their own in the plant. The stairwells are slightly oversized so that you can get up and down easily, and there'd be daylight in them. Excuse me. And then, just one last footnote, in each academy's administrative unit is an assistant principal, two counselors, psychologist, social worker, clerical staff, a conference room, and adult restrooms. I'd like to share with you some snapshots of the individual instruction spaces. We have three different versions of furniture layouts for the general classroom. One of the things that's sort of custom to what we're proposing here in Kingston is that there would be 3D full-size lockable storage cabinets, and we want teachers to be able to share the use of the classroom, so there could be up to three teachers that teach in this space, they each have their own lockable cabinet where they put their teaching materials and so on, have these stored within the room. The teacher's workstation is right next to the front door for the classroom, so it controls access and security. Teaching wall, and then this is sort of the most traditional layout of class, of desks, rather. We also are looking at a lab-type layout where tables can be put together so students can work collaboratively in groups of four, six, and eight. And then, and then finally, an electric configuration. And again, the built-in casework and the teaching wall and so on are the same, but furniture's very flexible in these spaces. Yes?
So can all of the rooms be given that furniture, if they can be configured in any of those ways that you just showed?
Well, we will need to make a commitment when we buy the furniture, how many we want to set up and each of the configurations. So we wanted to share today the different opportunities that there are, and I will ask the board's permission at the end of the discussion, we do want to send these plans out to Albany for building permit review in January, actually, January 10. And so these kinds of decisions, we can make while the plans are up at the state, but the built-in pieces, we need to be comfortable with because they'll be voting from every Makerspaces, they're, they've, they're not emerging, they have emerged. They're really wonderful supporters of the STEM curriculum that we're seeing emerging nationally, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We've designed, this is actually two classroom worth of space with a demountable wall in the center, and first and foremost, this amount of a wall can be closed, and these two spaces can function like regular classrooms. So we've, again, built flexibility in wherever we can. The idea is that in a makerspace configuration, there are support counters with a sink, there are built-in computers on the flanking side, there's a sort of a lecture area, and then also more of an experimentation in the building section. So you could be building robots, sculpture, I mean, anything we can think of can happen in these spaces, and we're looking at the idea of having pull-down technology or access to technology and power. And again, flexibility is sort of the key to these spaces. One of the other things that we tried to build into the plan is when you come into each academy, the first thing that you'll see is a big glass wall with the presentation area for the makerspace behind. And the idea is that each academy could set up different ideas and exhibits of the work that they're doing within their academy and have that be on display, but be safe inside the classroom itself behind the glass. So you're seeing a flat-screen TV and then different tables and so on that would allow us to share that artwork. A view down the corridor, full-height lockers, and again, classrooms and science labs on flanking edges. Science labs, we spent a number of our stakeholder meetings with the science teachers and talking about curriculum. All of our science labs are universal, everyone has a few, so if curriculum changes, we can teach chemistry one year and physics the next. All of our science labs are gang so that there's a prep room between. We built in a window from the prep room into that instruction space so we can set up experiments and then push them through into the classroom. One of the, one of the fun things that we've been doing with all of our newer science labs is the bench itself is mobile, there are casters on the bottom of the four legs, so we can reimagine how the science lab lays out depending on the curriculum and the subject that we're studying that week. So these, these units are mobile, they can come away, it makes for more storage and cabinet space underneath. There's a cubby design for book bags and backpacks and so on, and the idea is that the gases and the sinks are at the correct. We work also very closely with your special ed group. We made a sort of a strategic decision with the special ed staff to make the special ed classrooms full-size, so they're 770 square feet, just like the general classroom. So that, again, builds flexibility. If you want to add a second special ed classroom, you can take over a general ed or vice versa. If we only need one in the house instead of two, we can reclaim the space for general ed use. Now, what's nice about the special ed classroom is that it has this ALCO that the general classrooms don't, so there's the ability to store materials, curriculum-related information, and other, other elements that support the teacher's work in the space. Just thinking in the summer. I'd like to shift gears now and go to Salzman and talk about some of the core spaces that are proposed for the high school. This is the learning commons, which is the new main south entrance, if you picture that plaza where the bus drop-off is, and then at the other end is the entrance into the cafeteria. And what we've proposed is four separate flat-screen monitors that are owned by each of the four academies. And this is sort of each academy's storefront where they can have a PowerPoint show, or film, or whatever they want to have that they project out to the bigger high school community, happens in this learning commons along the main spine of the school. And then at the flanking end, adjacent to the cafeteria, is a large quad panel TV where general public announcements, any information that Kurt thinks is appropriate to be displayed there would happen in this, this really information center. We're looking into some sort of a bench or seating option so that when students are collecting, both when they come in the morning and then when they leave in the afternoon, there's places to sit. places to sit and so on. Moving down the Learning Commons, you're now seeing the entrance to the cafeteria. We're looking at having some flat-screen monitors outside the cafeteria so students can start to think about what the menu choices are for the day and figure out which line they want to get into once they get inside the cafeteria. This is an axonometric view. We are trending at right about 500 seats in the main dining space. We are working with the principal and others in the school to make sure that the seating is as safe as it can be. And actually, this is a new layout from the one that we saw, we're getting there, from the one we saw earlier in the week. And so we now have single-loaded seating on the edge, and then we pulled all the banquettes out to the center. There are five places where you can buy food in the proposed cafeteria, so two adjacent to the kitchen, which is over here, and then one floating platform out in the center of the dining area. You can see that in the seating, we're thinking about starting to employ some of the school's colors to bring it back in in a subtle way. We have both jipboard sofas and suspended ceilings that you can see in this space. And we think it'll be a really dynamic center piece in the school. It'll be a place for social interaction, and it'll also function before, after lunch period for a number of instructional uses. Moving now to the library media center. We have, we've captured and reclaimed the existing footprint of the two libraries that we have upstairs. The new idea proposes putting all of the main reading room type activities where the windows are in the space, and then in the interior, there's limited daylight, are the computer instruction labs in the core of the space. So there's a main entrance in this location with a circulation desk. Each of your two librarians would share an office space with a workroom, second means of egress in this area. So wherever there are shelves in the center of the space, there are low shelves so that we can supervise and see at a glance who's in the library and where they are. This is an example of common access computers that would be mounted up on a hot counter, general work cables. What we're excited about is that while the spaces appear to be, you know, very much different than we have today, very rich, they're really made up of simple materials. It's carpet tile on the floor, paint, and some boat sofas and two more ceiling tiles. So almost to the last slide now. We are not focusing on the exterior character tonight. We are looking at different colors to bring to the school, and we want to come back over the winter and have a separate discussion just about color and textures on the outside of the building, but we did want to share with you this snapshot of the overall school and some of the transformation that's gone on over the last six months in terms of the progress of the work. I think I did that in 15 minutes. And I just, your teachers work so hard to contribute, we want to make sure that you got to see some of the detail.
Go back to the cafeteria, slide, and... Yeah, there. What is that up at the top on the left, on the upper-left corner?
These, these stages?
Yeah.
These, so it's not drawn here, is the stainless steel kitchen is behind, and then these are the food service platforms. So you come in the center and you would choose, you know, is it Italian pizza today or salad or, you know, whatever the entrees are. And then you pick up your food and then make your way back out to the point of sale and into the, so it's a flow-through, much like that?
Oh, so I thought that was a different elevation of the floor, but it's not, it's just a...
It's an illusion of the axonometric, no, everything's on one floor. And then the idea is that the floating platform, not really floating, but the platform that's away from the kitchen would have pre-prepared beverages and sandwiches and other things that don't require the heavy-duty kitchen to support it from behind. But the idea with this is to pull off some of the traffic from the main kitchen and get it away from the side.
And is that in the space of the current cafeterias?
No, the, let me go back to the... So the cafeteria is the entire east-west wing of Salzman at the lower level. I shouldn't say the entire, the kitchen is in this area, the platforms that we were just looking at are here, and then this is the 500 seats. And the kitchen and cafeteria today are in this location?
So the cafeteria, as we have it today, is two different cafeterias. This will just be one large cafeteria?
Yes.
With all the students in together?
My question builds up. Has any discussion made to create like smaller nooks or smaller areas for students who might find being with that many dining companions overwhelming, or at least one big galley
So we very much tried to use the columns to create different spaces and places and break down the overall space. We did, we did hear different voices in terms of your stakeholder input, and there is a contingent that really likes the supervisability of this one overall space. And, you know, for a while, we had a solid wall that we came on and we were going, you know, no, we need to be transparent. From all of our adults in the cafeteria, we did see everybody at all times. We actually, we're even discouraged from having some of these ALCO void spaces because we don't want to have any concealed areas where if students, you know, get into trouble, we want to make sure an adult can see it immediately, but not only see it, but have access to it. And so we're actually still working on the most secure and safe layout for the furniture. We're reporting back to Dr. Pedalino and on those elements. But you raised really good issues, and I believe they've been talked through pretty succinctly.
Mr. Shaw, please.
This is something that I wanted to bring up to the board or the policy committee, but it's appropriate here, too. I don't know how to pronounce the, what is it, Shen, Dehola?
Shinidhala.
And then Dehola. School Board, two weeks ago, passed a policy for transgender students using the bathrooms of their sexual identity. And I think that it's now a policy there. And I guess one of the ways of accommodating that is to have gender-neutral bathrooms, at least, you know, like handicap or, you know, small, single-person bathrooms. So since we're building something that's going to be, you know, happen to check what our society's going to be in the next hundred years, is there some way of, have you considered that at all in your design?
That did come up during the stakeholder meeting, the sign-off on the programming with Andy, he brought that up, and it is being considered in the design itself.
Head it up to the state. We hope our rate is short.
Thank you, Mr. Sides.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I can give you a brief update on the 2015 project. Outside of the second century project?
Outside of this, we do still have the 2015, which is really, was originally combined with 2014, but because of the timeframe that it takes at SEB for the approval process, we then had to turn it over and create two summers worth of work. So the work this summer basically is the mechanical portion of the work at, for schools, boilers, electrical plumbing, that type of thing, AKA back and compliancy, and some rework on the front of GW for the steps and the entrances. Tomorrow morning, we were supposed to have a pre-dead yesterday, and because of the weather, we rescheduled it to tomorrow morning. And I plan on bringing letters of recommendation for contracts at the January board meeting, and we'll be starting this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, that is all I got for my...
Yes.
This is one 2015 statistics. Not at the high school.
No, separate.
It's a carrier of 24.
Yeah, this is...
I have a question. The high school, are you going to, because it's also related into the kind of late special ed program later, or are you going to be sticking around, or are you going to, because I can ask it now.
It's up to your, whenever it's into your schedule.
I'm just wondering what the contracting plan is for the building, and do you imagine like a small, smaller case, or like the, you know, four or five large ones, the plumbing electric?
The only, the only portion of the project right now that has already gone up to SEB, which is the Fieldhouse, that must have been launched, we have eight contracts, eight prime contracts for the Fieldhouse alone. I would expect to have a minimum of eight additional contracts for the Salzman building and possibly more for main. So although there'll be multiple contracts and contractors working on different portions and different phases of the project at the same time, I would expect to have maybe at most 20, 25 contracts. And there'll still be, there'll still be large, good-sized projects.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Pedalino?
No.
It's for Dr. Pedalino.
Thank you.
I have a stage for...
I'm the president, she was started before the four academies, and one of them is the ninth grade academy, but I'm wondering where we are in developing plans for the other three.
We are still very much in the infancy of that development. I mean, the strike art has been involved in some discussion, but one of the things that we're trying to do is not, not, we're only in our second year of implementation of the ninth grade academy. So we still think that there are things we can learn and things we need to know about the implementation of that before we jump into another academy. So again, it's something we're talking about, obviously, it's something that's in our plans, but we're slowly approaching it. And, you know, and we're still, we're still struggling with the idea, are they theme-based academies, are they grade-based academies, or what are those? So we think, as our results last year in that trade academy obviously were excellent. We want to see, you know, if what we did there translates into other academies and maybe, you know, learn from what we're doing.
Any other questions? Okay. Next up, the approval of minutes from November 19. Any amendments or corrections to minutes? All those in favor of holding minutes from November 19, please, if you are saying aye?
Aye.
Any other comments? Consent agenda, do we have any reservations that any board member would like to pull? Which bullets?
B-54 and BOE-35.
B-54 and BOE-35. Any others?
B-50.
B-50. Okay, nothing else? Did you say B?
B.
B. B and B. Did you say B and B? I did. Thank you. Any others? Okay, I entertain motion to put consent agenda minus B-54, BOE-35, and B-50.
Ooh.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of consent agenda minus B-54, B-50, and BOE-35, if you are saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone who carries?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
There's a couple of donations that are, at least one, I presume like $450 or something, that Mr. Carriner asked for. Someone stepped up and bought his 3D scanner for him.
Yes, they took that and worked the presentation that the city can say.
And was there another one?
There is another one, and it was one that, this is, our meeting was changed from the chambers venue to here because Sitco, the representative from Sitco could not be present. But that's the other donation.
So this is an $8,000 donation to Chambers from Sitco.
And there will be a presentation on December 17 at 1:30 PM at Chambers School for that, but the representatives from campus are available, and so we will be back there really in kindness domain, so I can use my walk around, worry about some, thank you. Okay, so the donations, briefly accepted by the board. B-54, I entertain motion to, for B-54. B-54's participation neutral, purchasing burger, yes.
I just wanted to say that I'm glad to see us being involved in something like this. At the end it says that we are going to be involved in the purpose of playground equipment, and I'm wondering if that's the sole purpose of this, or if we will be involved in other and perceiving other things through this initiative.
Mr. Shawson?
Our initial purchase to this organization is for playground equipment, for janitorial fact, but this program does offer a lot of other things, and we'll be searching there to see if they can, if there's some things that we want to buy, as I suspect that we will be using them further.
Thank you, Mr. Shawson. Okay, any further discussion to B-54? Are those, all those in favor of B-54, if you are saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. B-50, I entertain motion, B-50.
So more discussion?
Discussion.
I just had a question, I'm not sure if anyone here can answer, but one of the club formations, the new club was, it was the lumberjack club at a premier, curious.
Had a portion also.
Does anyone have any idea what that is?
Yes.
Their club charter, that was approved by the principal, says to promote environmental responsibility, arboreal understanding, the lumberjack way of life. The club promotes good health in the form of healthy flapjack eating, active summer sport competition.
There's a little action, right? Nobody really wants to go back.
Cool. Any other questions about the new club? Okay, all those in favor of B-50, if you are saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone? BOE-35, merged all...
BOE-35.
Yes.
My question is that, recently the media has approved other collaborations around sports, and so gymnastics and some of those in the instances of other school districts sending their kids to us.
Correct.
This is different, we're merging these, so can you talk about the difference?
Yeah, really the difference here is that we are coming, we're kind of coming together in the middle, instead of us absorbing another group. The coach will be provided by roundout this year, but we're, it's more of a dual team than there players playing on our team. So it's more of a Kingston roundout Alpine team rather than Kingston players playing on a roundout team.
Okay, I see we'll share some, we'll share some costs based on people who participate in those.
Correct. Correct.
Any other questions about the merger, we all can speak to you. Yes.
Just a question about the Alman, when do they practice or where do they go, do they go to Bel Air to practice or?
I'm not sure where they go to practice.
How often do they practice?
Bel Air on Saturdays.
I think most of the members of our, that are on the Alpine ski team and other ski teams, they're, they're competitive in other, you know, other venues who practice on other, on other teams as well, so.
Any other question? Alright, all those in favor of BOE thirty-five, please signify as saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. And we have, is this, we should walk in. Okay, we have one, I guess we'll do the review business, one more. Okay, so may I add to Board of Education Audit and Compliance of Mr. Shonk.
We had.
It was on, we had, uh. The third.
The third.
The third.
We had to delay our meeting, I believe from.
That was my fault, sorry, didn't want.
That's okay. So we reviewed the, according to the policy that we adopted last year on these extracurricular activities, we reviewed the new, the applications for new, for new clubs and also the, the charters for the existing clubs, which was the listing of officers, president and secretary, I believe there was two officers, so we, we voted to recommend those to the Board of Education. We've already passed those in the incentive, but we reviewed the, we also then reviewed the three corrective action plans, one for the Medicaid compliance audit that was done by our internal auditor, the external audit for the, the general financial funds, and then also the corrective action plan for the extra classroom activity funds. And we passed those on for approval by the board, which we already did, also in the consent agenda. So we have the Treasurers Report for October two thousand fourteen, which we recommended to the board for acceptance, and I'd like to move BOE thirty-six.
One second.
Any discussion?
Alright, all those in favor of BOE thirty-six, the Treasurers Report, accepting? Please signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And also we reviewed the Claims Auditor Report for October two thousand fourteen, which was, didn't have anything, any, any problems listed, no exceptions, so I'd like to move BOE thirty-seven, the Claims Auditor Report, for education to accept that. I second.
Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of accepting the Claims Auditor Report, please signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Shonk.
And our next meeting will be December twenty-third.
Just before.
Unless it's a snow day.
Okay.
It'll be nine AM, no, it doesn't matter.
Thank you. Manager of the Mr. Michael, the City Commission?
The commission went November thirteenth, March. And to those who would like to mention tonight is that the commission discussed about the need of a turf replacement of the stadium in the next six to seven years. And we said that we, the district and also the city of Kingston have particularly someone additional money for the, you know, for the, for the fund, so be able to replace the turf. Also, out of, at the end of that discussion, the, the city of Kingston commission has always recommended for the, a whole meeting, the district with the city, the mayor and the superintendent about the future of the stadium. And there is some idea that the city would be offering the stadium to us to take that as a whole. And the meeting was set to be yesterday, I mean, the snow day, right? Was meant to be, they held the meeting, but it was postponed for another day. We have a, we don't know the day yet, so. The other thing I would like to mention is the, the lease agreement we have from Mr. Collins at the stadium, the lease will be expiring January seventh, and Mr. Collins hasn't approached us yet if he's willing to buy the property or another lease agreement. But if there will be any lease agreement, that agreement has to go for the referendum, so we have to vote on it. That's all. And the next meeting will be held December the eighteenth at the Cion Building.
At which time are we discussing stadium?
No, it's only our regular meeting for the year, it'll be the last meeting of the year.
That's why. Mr. Mike, where do you, where do you hold the meeting?
Most of the meetings are held at the city hall, and some meetings because the district is busy, you know, having many here, so we have some meeting somebody in this building. And our Christmas meeting will be held here next week.
If, if the district were to accept ownership of the city's share of the stadium, would that require a voter referendum?
We still have to find out, because we need to find out and work to our attorneys and such, but find out.
Or can I add something else? Will be some legal issues, you know, whether happens if it goes that way, that in the back of the stadium, what is the park? We have to consider that the stadium is part of the school property, so from the back of the park and the actual school, we, there is a, some kind of way, this way there, that we might be able to purchase from the city, so the property will be adjoint from the school and the stadium.
I think at one point there was some discussion about that, and in order for there to be stay A on the stadium, it had to be connected to school property, so there was talk of an easement, pictures of a quarter between, between Bailey and the stadium.
I think this is a, this is a long, complicated conversation that will take place over the next few months and.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, that's it, that's all I have to say.
Um, just, if it pleases the board, we have a group of students who are here from, from class that need their sign forms signed, and I for one would like to get them home if our next two weeks. So if we could take two seconds and let them come up and we decide for them, they can go back and do their homework, not do something else.
Okay, let's let it rip. And moving on to Policy Committee. Mrs. Comer, you can report for policy.
Yes, I will, but thanks to my colleagues since I was unable to, media is very busy, thanks to my colleagues and Mrs. Bowles. It seems like there were about seven policies that were reviewed, so I will try and be concise. First of all, policy number nineteen hundred, school, family, community partnership, was agreed to with several slight changes in verbiage, but it seems that the important part was to stress the importance of community partnerships and some phrasing about community partnerships are a key component of this policy and towards this end, the district will build relationships with local businesses, local government, healthcare, social service and civic and community organizations in order to share resources and strengthen school programs, family practices and student learning. The next policy that was reviewed, excuse me, was deferred, it was policy five one one zero, school attendance boundaries, that's going to be deferred to our January meeting. There was a NISBA draft of policy fifty five hundred, student records, where our council agreed to recommend some slight changes to address concerns over district liability to pull third party contractors and clients in chapter fifty-six of the laws of twenty fourteen. We'll maintain directory information as it is in our current policy, it was decided, and a slight language change talking about wearing student IDs, replacing cards with badges. A NISBA draft sixty seven hundred, purchasing was reviewed by Mr. Olson, and the committee will recommend that draft policy, that will also serve to meet the requirements of the annual review. And this is the only policy where the Board of Education also adopts the regulations. Draft NISBA policy eighty six thirty-five, information security breach notification was recommended to replace our current policy. The question of BYOBs, or bring your own devices, was revisited once again with pertinent policy drafts, we need to review the protocol and barriers, et cetera, before beginning a full discussion with the board. The annual review of the policy sixty two forty, district investments, was done with no recommended changes to the current policy. And sixty seven forty-one, contracting for professional services, was also under, the under, annual review was undergone with no recommended changes. And it was a bit of additional discussion about disciplinary codes, we know that's a hot button issue, was agreed that while we were not recommending changes to the infractions slash consequences at this time, we will continue to read, research and do the legwork now to inform a future discussion. So thanks to the policy committee members for all that work. And the next meeting will be in January, the first Friday in January.
Second.
The second.
Sunday.
Yes, which was the second, first Friday is the second. Correct.
The second, January second.
No, January is not the second. Yes, so January ninth is the second.
January ninth, okay, point of view nation, are, this is a first reading, or?
No, you're not.
Okay, so on the next agenda. Thanks. Thank you very much, Mrs. Bowles. And now to Middletown litigation support.
That sounds like a very, that's a very full meeting, so, and I know there's a lot on the table, so I appreciate all the work. So two questions. I know there is a lot of legwork and research that has to be done around the discipline policy, but I hope that we can move on that, because I think it's pretty urgent and how we address that in our district. And I'm happy to help with that, if you need more heads and hands and that, and how to do, do you part that. And I'm also wondering, there was a conversation a while ago, like a couple of talks, and I just wonder where we are with that, is that approved this year?
I think we're having a recent discussion about that.
It was last year.
No, it was last year, wasn't it?
It was last year. It was kind of on the table, it was table draft.
Okay.
It was last year, they're, right now, the existing policy and, and regulations. Any other questions, Mrs. Comer? Okay, now we'll move on to the Middletown litigation support. I'm sure you all got a chance to read the brief and maybe some of you have seen that for eastward on television. So, so we had a discussion about that, about the supporting Middletown. Middletown has filed a claim and they haven't received sufficient support, they filed a claim with the Office of Civil Rights, I believe, they haven't received sufficient support, they're a high poverty district, and they're looking for support from other districts right now. Please, Middletown has been affected.
Middletown's got good.
I thought this brief was very, I thought it was very interesting actually, to go to the table on, on page ten, it begins on page ten, it talks about the percentage of funding, if we were really following the foundation formula, how much funding we would be getting. And I think they're claiming is that the way that the formula is being, or the way that funding is being allocated in the formula actually isn't even following the formula, and it's discriminating against high poverty and minority districts. I thought it was interesting that there are some districts in our, in our county that are actually getting not under this safety list, although I was surprised by their combined wealth ratio in those districts, but it surprised me that those districts are, are high portfolio. So, yeah, so, okay. Anyway, I, I think it's worthwhile, I think this is important, we had a conversation with the School Works Association about this, about, you know, advocacy around eliminating the G E N, which is very important, and that fighting for the funding of the formula that came out of C and D would be a much more systemic approach to fixing our fiscal ailments. So I'd be in support of supporting this very much.
Anyone else want to speak to that? Right, I too, I'm sorry.
Are they asking for?
They're asking for support and I.
Are they asking for support or?
No, no, moral support.
Moral support.
Right, supportive resolution, and we could have ready for the January seventh meeting, but they wanted us to have a discussion about it, so.
I'm in favor of supporting the Middletown district. I'm in favor.
All some favor?
You think?
Yes, you two are in favor, I think that, you know, the General Nutrition Adjustment Act is, um, far too long, and the way the foundation aid is distributed and figured for districts makes practically no sense. So we'd very much in support of a supportive resolution for the January seventh, it was always for that to be prepared. Okay, excellent, who was the next? Sorry. Thank you very much. Old business, now, other old business, we have one bullet, it's not to say that you can't bring up other old business, but we have the PLA subcommittee report. There was a brief discussion on November nineteenth, I was not present because you need to change in the minutes, but you did discuss the PLA, possibility of a PLA. And we have in our board ticket this week, a report from the subcommittee, so looking forward to discussion on PLA. And we heard from someone from Google constituency.
Well, can, can we move, can we make a motion to, for resolution, two thousand fourteen BOE thirty-six?
And then have the discussion? I think we need to have the discussion.
Well, I mean, discussion can be in consideration of the resolution.
Okay, so in anticipation of this, we have a resolution, twenty fourteen BOE thirty-six. The result upon the recognition of Dr. Paul J. Patalino as superintendent of schools, that the Board of Education hereby approves a proposal dated November eleventh, twenty fourteen, submitted by Hill International Incorporated, to provide project labor agreement feasibility study, economic analysis and related services in connection with the district's Kingston High School Second Century Project, per fee of twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars, four hundred and forty dollars, excuse me, and authorize the board of, the president to execute a contract with Hill International Incorporated. Upon approval, the same by the school attorney, a copy of such contract shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Motion.
I'll move.
Okay, second?
I second.
Discussion.
Do you want to, do you, do you need to record? It's quite a question.
Okay, second?
I second.
Discussion.
We want to.
Okay.
Can you record that?
Okay, there were four of us who were on the P L A study committee. Mr. Chauncey, myself, Robert Costa, and Mr. Michael. And we met four times. The first time on October fifteenth, when we met with the open shop contractor organizations and represented by Mr. Joe Hogan. Let me see if I can get this right here. Yes. Joe Hogan, Vice President of Building Services for A G C, Associated General Contractors, Mr. Joshua Reeve, A G C, Associated Builders and Contractors Incorporated, the Regional Vice President, and Mr. Mike Feisenhanger, Executive Director of N S C A, which is the Northeastern Subcontractors Association. Also present were the construction manager from B V L, Robbins Ferdenas, who we heard from earlier, who's been working with the district for about seven years now on various projects. Also present were Michael De Lima, who is also with the Yale Construction, Mr. Clapper, who's the Director of Cities and Grounds, Alan Elson, who's Deputy Superintendent of Human Resources and Business. And we had a very long conversation with the non-union contractors, and they talk about, they talked about the advantages and disadvantages of working under P L As. They, of course, were in favor of working under the competitive bidding laws. And we heard a number of assertions from the non-union contractors. And they talked about P L As jarring up cost construction, which, of course, was refuted by unions, because they reduce competition effectively, exclude open shop contractors, and skilled employees from holding, from building projects paid for by their tax dollars. This occurs because the P L A makes all contractors signatories to a contract negotiated by unions. P L As require open shop companies to obtain workers from hiring halls, and non-union employees may have to pay union dues and fees or join a union in order to work on a P L A project. So that was their contention, that it unnecessarily drives up the cost. They also had some criticism of P L A due diligence studies, which are required if you're considering a P L A, you must do a due diligence study, saying that there are very, very few, we didn't find any really, post-P L A studies done, to find out if the savings that were promised have actually been secured. So that was their assertion. The union contractors met with us on October thirtieth. We had Mr. Diorio, who is the President of Hudson Valley Building and Construction Trades Council, Mr. Mike Camp from the Local eight twenty-five International Union of Operating Engineers, and a superintendent from Marburg, Mr. Ralph Castellano, who has entered into several P L A arrangements with the union contractors. Over the course of twelve years, he's had three, and brought them in seventy million dollars in building contracts. Mr. Diorio, speaking for the union, extolled the advantages of having a P L A, saying that they could negotiate for shift differential adjustments, so that would be saving money on overtime, second and third shift. Mr. Ferdenas, who was also present at the meeting, got informed that for this particular project, and for the projects that we have actually executed with B V L all along, there has been no second or third shift work, and she was unsure if any cost savings would then be generated via the shift differential adjustments. Mr. Diorio then spoke about the advantages of dispute resolution, the apprenticeship programs, which were referenced earlier, and employing local workers. He said that P L A would guard against work stoppages and could set a common holiday calendar for all workers on a project as possible terms for a P L A contract. Mr. Diorio said that the, he was asked regarding the percentages of union workers currently available in the local counties, and he stated that they would guarantee worker availability, even if it meant going to other counties to secure it. Mr. Castellano talked about his positive experience with P L As, saying that his district saved a lot of money after hours' work, or second and third shift differential work, and his projects came in on time and under budget. So after Mr. Diorio and Mr. Camp departed, Ms. Ferdenas and Mr. De Lima, who are both from the B V L Construction, said that it was, in their view, highly unlikely to review cost savings as a result of second and third shift differential, since there would be no second or third shift differential work. So it was her job to manage the workplace disputes, and her position as construction manager, and opting not to enter into a P L A does not preclude local unions from participating in the competitive bidding process. They're still welcome to throw in their hats in the ring in a competitive bidding process. She anticipated a large percentage of work on a project will be done by union contractors, regardless of whether or not we enter into a P L A. And she went on to emphasize that all workers, open shop or union, are all paid the prevailing wage for the trade. At any rate, because of the timeframe that exists, if we decide to do a P L A due diligence study, it has to be done post-haste. And so we obtained, we decided on November sixth, when we met just the subcommittee, to reach out to Robbins Ferdenas as the general contractor, and ask her to find companies that were, could be approved by either side, either union or the open shop contractors. To do a due diligence study, she did. We obtained an offer, which is cited in here from Hill International, and for twenty-four four. It's important to note that our contracts pretty much have to be in place by February, because they are going out to bed shortly thereafter, breaking ground, ceremonial breaking ground, April eighteenth through the fieldhouse, but in June, definitely, and the summer work this summer. So because of the length of time it takes, it is taken to approve projects, it's important that we have our contracts ready by the end of February. It's also important to note here that due diligence studies are not applicable, so this comes out of the budget. And I know it's just a fraction of the overall project cost. But it's also important to note that school districts are not required to consider P L As, we're kind of in a different category when it comes to municipal projects. We can't go over what has been approved by the voters. So we just have to stop work, I guess. And employing local labor is laudable, it is laudable, but entering a P L, entering or not entering a P L A, entering a P L A, we would definitely have local union workers employed. Anecdotally, we have heard, and I know you have all received notification from, at least one, I've heard from more than one, and Alice Ferdenas has heard from a half a dozen, local non-union, open shop contractors who are very much opposed to a P L A, and they make the assertion that they, too, are taxpayers. So given all that, anybody from the committee who would like to add something?
Well, I have what I consider a minority report. And this is my own, my own preparation. So I'd like to explain to the public that project labor agreements are pre-did agreements between construction unions and project owners that establish work rules and procedures that would be in effect for the length of the particular construction project. They are authorized by the National Labor Relations Act, which was signed into law by President Franklin Roosevelt in nineteen thirty-five. They were first used in federal projects on the Grand Cooley, Hoover, and Shasta dams in the nineteen thirties, and they have been used on many public and private construction projects since then. In nineteen ninety-three, the Supreme Court unanimously ruled in the Boston-Harvard decision that public agencies could use P L As in their role as market participants. That is, when the public agencies are the owners of the construction project. You may hear some people say that P L As were illegal in state and local public construction projects before that, but I don't believe that to be the case. When the Supreme Court rules that a law is legal, it doesn't mean that it was illegal before that. It means that the people who were arguing that it was illegal were wrong. In New York State, the Court of Appeals ruled in nineteen ninety-six that public project P L As in New York State must be based on project-specific pre-adoption analysis. That P L A would advance the interests of the underlying competitive bidding laws, which are meant to ensure high-quality workmanship at the lowest possible price. The Governor of Kentucky issued Executive Order forty-nine in nineteen ninety-seven, requiring that state agencies consider P L As on publicly funded projects. Protection of the rights of union and non-worker, and non-union workers should be a feature of a P L A. Also, if the union cannot supply sufficient qualified employees within a defined time period, usually forty-eight hours, contractors can hire workers from another source. So we have a proposal from Hill International to do a feasibility study for twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty dollars. And I'd like to point out that Hill International was a party to the case that was decided by the New York State Court of Appeals in nineteen ninety-six. So as a percentage of the project of one hundred and thirty-seven million five hundred thousand dollars, this is point zero one eight percent, eighteen thousandths of one percent. And for comparison, if I were to spend, if I were to be spending two hundred thousand dollars for a new house, this would be the equivalent of thirty-six dollars for an inspection report. And for the average property owner in our district, this would be the tip for one of the monthly purchases of a Starbucks latte that they will be paying for twenty years. Much of the material that the committee received for consideration was really political. You know, it's very much, until you have, until you have a feasibility study, it's very much a political decision as to whether or not you want to, you want to have one or not have one. The contractors, the non-union contractors will take one side, and the unions will take another side. We received information from the Associated General Contractors of America. Their fact sheet is oppose all efforts to encourage the use of government-mandated project labor agreements on federal construction projects. The Beacon Hill Institute is a conservative think tank in Boston. In their summary, in the document that we received from them, in their executive summary, they claim that the average square foot construction cost in New York, of school construction in New York State was one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. And I've been on the board since two thousand and six, and in that entire time, construction costs have been quoted to me by architects and engineers, is three hundred dollars per square foot or more. The Cato Institute also had a paper against P L As. And the mission of the Cato Institute is to originate, disseminate, and increase understanding of public policies based on the principles of individual liberty, limited government, free markets, and peace. Our vision is to create free, open, and civil society founded on libertarian principles. So they're not going to support a P L A. We had a document from the Hudson Valley Building and Construction Trades Council. Of course, they took the opposite side, that they were in favor of P L As. And we also had a report that was written by Fred Kotler, a lawyer who is Associate Director of the Construction Industry Program at the Cornell University Institute of Industry and Labor Relations. And the title of that study was Project Labor Agreements in New York State in the Public Interest. So for me, the advantages of a P L A are the first policy aspects, increase the likelihood of local labor being used on a project, increase the likelihood of effective apprentice programs, and our recently graduated students will benefit from this. The practical aspects are that there are guarantee of no strikes or work stoppages, common work and holiday schedules, savings on shift differentials, defined methods of dispute resolution. The contractors pointed out to us that the Austin County Law Enforcement Project had a P L A, and I think we all know that there was a forty million dollar cost overrun on that. But I have it from one of our high officials in the county government, that the cost overruns had nothing to do with labor costs, except to the extent that wages had to be paid to correct the mistakes caused by political decisions by the county legislature, and mistakes by the architects, construction managers, and other consultants. Reduced competition in bidding is one of the arguments against the P L A. But in the Boston-Harvard case, the U.S. Supreme Court made clear, and that was a unanimous decision, that those contractors who do not normally enter into such agreements are faced with a choice. They may alter their usual mode of operation to secure the business opportunity at hand, or seek business from purchasers whose perceived needs do not include a project labor agreement. And the Court of Appeals echoed that finding, and said that the fact that certain non-union contractors may be disinclined to submit bids does not amount to the conclusion of competition. And I know B V L has said that there's no, that there's no scheduled second or third shift work. Personally, I don't believe that. I don't, I don't, I don't think that there's any way to predict whether or not we'll need second or third shift work. But I did an estimate, I took the total labor cost, let's say fifty million dollars, which would be fifty percent of the hundred million dollars of the construction cost, and the average wage, the average labor rate of sixty-five thousand, of sixty-five dollars per hour. And that means there would be total labor hours of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-one hours. And even if there was only one percent of those hours that were second or third shift, the shift differential, the savings of a shift differential between twenty-five percent, which is what the standard labor, union contract is, and ten percent, which is typical of what's found in P L As, that would amount to a savings of seventy-five thousand dollars, just one percent of the hours on second shift. And then a brief summary of the executive orders, executive presidential orders on project labor agreements, to show that this is really a political decision. George H. W. Bush issued Executive Order one two eight one eight on October twenty-third, nineteen ninety-two. The title of that was Open Bidding on Federal and Federally Funded Construction Projects. I don't know why he did that on October twenty-third of nineteen ninety-two, because he must have known he was going to lose the election a few weeks later. But William J. Clinton, on February third, nineteen ninety-three, two weeks after he took office, Executive Order one two eight three six, revocation of certain executive orders concerning federal contracts. George W. Bush, Executive Order one three two oh two of February seventeenth, two thousand and one, preservation of open competition in government and travel towards government contractors, labor relations on federal and federally funded construction projects. Barack Obama, on April sixth, two thousand and one, uh, two thousand and nine, I'm sorry, February seventeenth, two thousand and nine, Executive Order, Use of Project Labor Agreements for Federal Construction Projects, revoke Order thirteen two oh two of February seventeenth, two thousand and one. So this just goes back in forty. If there's a Republican elected in two thousand and sixteen, it's going to be revoked. If there's a Democrat elected in two thousand and sixteen, it'll be continued. But I think that we owe it to the, to the voters, to the local workers, and to the students that might benefit from apprentice programs, that we at least expend the money to get a, an unbiased opinion of potential savings from Hill International. They say they can do it in four weeks. So thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. Chauncey. Robert Costa, do you have something to add?
My first hearing of a P, Project Labor Management was important to the committee. I'm not. Uh, I'm not, I'm not in agreement to spending the close to twenty-five thousand dollars just to see what I'm going to save and what I should. And that, um, that's my, as far as the PLA is concerned, uh, I don't have an in-depth report, I mean, colleague. But, uh, my, my, my concern right now is spending money that's not able, uh, to do this.
Mr. Michael?
Uh, honestly, for the first time I heard about PLA, I have no idea what is a PLA. So, the last couple of months, we've spent lots of time trying to find out what is a PLA, what is the purpose, what is the need of PLA. Uh, I'm not in favor of going along with PLA, I'd be forward and straight, and I have a couple of reasons why. This is a bunch of, uh, due diligence reports done for several projects in the state or whatever, but it's something missing. And what is missing, what you call a post-PLA study. All these papers, they promise saving money, but I haven't seen a study that actually happened at the end of these projects. And I can't find any study anywhere that states the savings are supposed to be getting, if there is savings. It did actually happen. And, uh, as Mr. Shonasey mentioned, like, you know, this is a lot of politics involved, you know, you, he already mentioned that to you, but I always look at the district as not being a, uh, uh, what can I say, um, we are not, uh, a, a, an agency. We are a government agency, a total hundred percent government agency. I always look at the district quasi-government agency. We have a taxpayer that we're responsible to, the tax dollars. And I feel that by going with a PLA agreement is not fair to everybody in the community. I heard the mayor, Mr. Landy, saying that, you know, the poor local people are worried about tax dollars in the, in the area, but according to the U.S. labor, the statistics of last year, was only thirty point two percent union workers. So, I was wondering about the other eighty-seven workers in our community. And I find it is not fair. And I grow up, learn to be a fair man, so I found it a very, very unfair deal to sign for a PLA. And the most thing that really bothered me was the fact when we met most of these union leaders, you know, presented themselves and what they can do for us, they were very, very intimidated. And Mr. Costin, although Mr. Shonasey, the president of the board, you know, acknowledged that. And I found it very, very unusual for the size of the project we've been spending. And these people coming from Jersey, Connecticut, labor, big labor unions, to be threatened, intimidated, like, well, we have to do this for us, otherwise, we're going to bring these rats. I think I found it very, very wrong. So, as far as I'm concerned, if they want to demonstrate with one rat or ten rats, give me half a care. Because I, I don't have more of this. Oh, I don't want to say anymore. So, as I said, uh, as I said, nobody know for this PLA agreement.
Uh, yes, Reverend Costin.
I think it was in the, in the first meeting, and I've been thinking about it, it was just a meeting, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was in the first meeting upstairs where the, the group that we met with said or did what I took as a threat. I said that they would pick it.
Oh, no, that was the, what you, yeah.
Anyway, I, I took it as a threat. They would pick it, so we didn't pull on their design.
Okay, I, I would just like to add something. The professional building organization representatives, and I know Mr. Shonasey's always biased, so is the union position, stated PLAs are not necessary to, are often not successful at ensuring, um, labor peace or keeping a project safe on time, on budget, or compliance with labor laws, that disputes still occur even with a PLA. Although, you know, that's one of the assurances that we have. One of the other things about apprenticeship programs, I know the, the open shop contractors said they would love to sponsor apprenticeship programs, but the unions work into their contracts, uh, caveats that only unions can sponsor apprenticeship programs. So, that, that's, um, should be said. But another thing here is, we're talking about a construction management firm that we've worked with since two thousand and seven, and they've brought in project after project, on time and under budget. So, that should be noted, uh, in fairness to BBL. They've worked very closely with the district. They've done the summer projects, um, along with KSQ, uh, and they have brought in one project after another, on time and under budget. Um, we have the same construction manager for the KHS Second Century Project as, as we've had for any other projects. So, but that needs to be said. Question?
Who would negotiate the PLA? Wouldn't, wouldn't BBL negotiate that for us? With the attorney?
Well, the unions would have a plan to, you know.
Right, but, but BBL would be negotiating that for us, correct?
Yes. Can I add something to?
Yes.
About BBL, as you mentioned, they've done a tremendous job with us, uh, BBL is managing all of our projects. The other thing, I look at the PLA more or less like being a middleman, you know, BBL manages the, they're trying to jump for us, bringing the PLA, then we're going to have more to say, you know, what's going on. And I look at them more as the middleman. And nobody likes a middleman. Anybody likes a middleman? Please let me know, because I don't. I've been in business for a long time, and I always hated to pay middlemen. And I don't like to see them in the middle of the projects.
Mrs. Collins?
I just, excuse me, I just wanted to speak to some of the process that I'm going through in my own head as a member of the board, charged with the, the sharing responsibility to the community. I, I, believe me, it's a very complex decision. Um, and, you know, it's not only politically hot button issue, it's emotional. Well, a lot of people have a lot invested in this, and it's a difficult decision. You know, I'm a member of the union myself for, for twenty-five years, I see both sides of it. Also, I'm very, very aware of the cost of taxpayers, reading the committee's report, and I want to defer to those of you who serve and spend your time on this committee, and seeing that figure of close to twenty-five thousand dollars, my initial response was no way, should we spend that money? Um, but, you know, and, and looking a little bit deeper too, and knowing that it is, that slight percentage, would we not, would it not behoove us to at least see if there might be some savings that we can, especially when working on a building? And I'm very pleased with the, this construction proof that we have there, but, you know, going to a building that's a hundred-plus years old, what we're getting into, you know, sometimes things come up. So, I just keep looking back at this resolution that's before us on the table, and I really don't know, honestly, one side that I would err to, but also, part of me says we've spent a lot more money on things that we've been forced to spend on, let's say litigation, et cetera. And I just think that maybe we want to get back to that issue. Is this something I'd want to go ahead with? I would feel much better, as expressed by the committee, if we had those post-PLA studies, when it seems that we do not have the luxury of that. And time is of the essence. So, that's my process. Um, and those are, I, I can see both sides of the issue. I'm trying to keep an open mind, but I think right now we have to decide if this is something I would want to put forward or at least go up with a study from Hill or not.
I appreciate what you just said, Ms. Collins, because I'm sitting here having the same, I've been having the same debate in my head, and I appreciated this report. I have also done some of my own work in talking with, um, people who are in the industry and trying to get a better handle on what a PLA is and what the report is. And I, um, on the one hand, twenty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money, on the other hand, as Mr. Shonasey said, it's, it's not a lot to see if we could have some kind of savings. And I, I, I think it might be worth, it's hard to have this conversation without knowing what the savings might be. And I would hope that, um, I sincerely appreciate very much all the work that you all have done for us, um, and I trust them. And so, if they were going to be ones that negotiated this contract, I mean, to me, if we decide to go that route, then that, that is not a decision that's being made now, let's just be clear about that. Um, I mean, I, I would trust them to do that. I, I would also hope that this group would understand our specific context, and second and third shift work isn't part of our situation. Then they need to help us understand what other concessions might be negotiated as this document here. So, what would we be saving on, and what would that be? And that's what the report needs to be about, is how they're doing.
Yes, we do. I was raised by several generations of union workers, so this is a, but my gut instinct just tells me that any, I agree with Mr. Shon, Mr. Michael, sorry, I was saying the same instinct, that any contract that precludes members of our community from being involved is against everything that I believe in outside of being on the board. And also, the fact that there are no post-studies, um, I work in psychology and would never, you know, treatment or anything to show that it's effective always has some kind of follow-up, so it automatically makes me a little bit skeptical of the fact that there's no proven efficacy of these agreements. And although it's not a lot in comparison to millions of dollars we're spending, twenty-five thousand dollars is more than a lot of parents in our district need, so it's hard to, you know, have to explain how we're going to spend that much money to save money to our taxpayers.
One more question. I have one more question. But a PLA, and again, we're not voting on whether we're going for a PLA at this moment.
Well, that's the resolution. I mean, we're just having a discussion.
Right, no, no, the resolution is about study.
It's about doing a study, which is the first step. This has, this has to be done.
Right, but we're not voting on whether we're going to use a PLA at this moment.
We're voting on whether we're going to do the due diligence study. Now, we don't have to do a due diligence study.
I understand. Um, if we do decide at some later point to use PLA, does that include non-union members from doing the work?
Could we just, could you...
If we do decide to go for the PLA in the future, does that include non-union members from working?
Well, they may have to go outside the union hiring halls if they want to have people there. And, um, you know, non-union contractors could bid on a job. We only have it from a half a dozen local non-union contractors that they would not if there was a PLA.
They would have to pay the same, they would just pay the same rate that, in all aspects, right, benefits every piece of...
Regardless, no, they would have to pay the union debt. Yeah, but, um, they are paid at prevailing rates, rates regardless.
Right.
I just, just to, uh, to special remember, if we, if we, in order to do a PLA, we must do what I called to bid, I would think about it, an estimate.
We should do this.
Uh, either study.
Yes.
Uh, if we do, to do a PLA, then we must do this study. We must have, spend the close to twenty-five thousand dollars off. And, uh...
That was the last one.
So, this, to me, that is the first step, to lead and towards a PLA.
Yes, you must do this to then do a PLA. You can't do a PLA without a due diligence study. It's required by law. Yes. Reverend Shonasey?
When I was elected to the board, I considered that what I was coming on this group on was to do what is in the best interest for our children in education. I was not elected to try to determine whether I'm going to give jobs to the unions or non-union. I was, I was elected, I believe, to, to do what is in the best interest of our children and for education. So, the political aspect of politicians weighing in to say we should do this or that is just what it is, it's political, and, and that doesn't sway me. The, as I looked at all the information, I was a little bit disappointed with the subcommittee, because I expected that the subcommittee was going to bring us a lot of information that they had explored and looked at and had determined that this is the best direction to go, at which we could ask questions as to how you got there and the sector. Bringing it back to us as it is now is throwing all this stuff to us and saying, you got to make the decision now, because we haven't made one. When I think again of, of, of what it is that we're, we're being asked to do, I could not, as I looked at, I said, if we look at our project, our project managers have said to us that we're not going to use second, third shift people. And it seems to me from all the information that I had and that has been given to us, and that's limited for me, it seemed that the biggest possibility of savings is around that issue of, of shift differential. If we move that out of the equation, and that's not going to be what we're doing, then I begin to say, well, where is the savings? And again, I have to say that it's open competitive bidding. So, I don't see how that rules the union out or the labor market within our community from not being able to participate in the projects that we have. Yet, on the other hand, with PLA, sometimes it seems the way that they have been, been structured has eliminated the possibility of some of the non-union shops being able to participate in what we're doing. So, I've been wrestling with this all, all along, but I, I still come, I think I've come to the conclusion to feel that I don't see what a PLA is going to do for us. We have a good construction group who have demonstrated their ability to manage our projects. We, we've seen them come in time after time, certainly on schedule and, and below budget. I don't know what we're going to buy with a PLA other than the political thing that says we satisfied the unions or, or this group to say that we did that, all the politicians to say that they did it. And I expect that they're going to say what they got to say, because much of their being is based on that political aspect of it. Mine isn't. And so, I am leaning not to do the study, because I don't really see on the surface from what you've given to me where the savings are.
Anyone else? Reverend Costin?
Respond to my good friend, my colleague, and representative committee. It was my understanding, and I asked for sir on the committee, is that the committee would do the labor, gather information, not, not make a decision, but bring the information back to the entire board, so that the entire board can make their decision. So, I think that's what we did. We did the labor and, and, and listened to all those that's involved, that want to be involved, and brought the, brought the information back to this committee, I mean, to this board for the board to make the final decision.
I, I don't want to go back and forth. Maybe that's what you're understanding, but my understanding is that I would expect that the committee would come, you had the privilege and the opportunity to sit down with all of these people, hear the pros and cons and the sector, and go through it. Most of our committees, the way that they work, is that, I mean, I don't sit on the audit committee, but when the audit committee brings that back, I look at the information. If I don't see any questions, ninety-nine percent of the time, we go along with what that committee has done, because they have developed the expertise that we trust and have confidence in. To me, I, what I got here didn't help me with making a decision totally. I would have felt much better if you had looked at that and said, based upon what we've heard and what we've done, our recommendation is, we don't have to go to your recommendation. We can discuss it, which we would, but at least we would have said, these people have looked at all these details. I haven't read all of these reports. I read a PLA book that, that came and a couple of other things. I haven't read all of that, but yet. So, that's where you are.
Mr. Shonasey?
Well, one of the reasons that I wanted to have, have this resolution on the floor is because the art, one of the arguments against, you know, is that we're up against a timeframe. We need to, we, we need to get this done. If we don't pass, if we don't do this today, then the next opportunity would be February, January seventh, and that would be, you know, it would take at least, you know, four weeks and then two weeks to do a PLA agreement, if that was the decision, you know, and, and the argument will be that we don't have time to do it. This really should have been brought to the board much earlier than it was. And I'm very upset about that, and I, that's as far as I'll go about that right now.
Anyone else?
I'm now lost in our process. We have...
Okay, we have a resolution. Okay, we have a resolution on the floor. That was the discussion.
So the next, once everyone's comments are done, then we're going to.
We should vote on the resolution.
Okay, so now I do my final comment. This is complicated and it's hard, and I think, I agree with what Reverend Child said about commitment to our kids, and that's what we've been on the board. We also have to be sharing responsibility to our community. And I'm going to vote yes to move forward with the study, because I think we need to understand what we could possibly save, and I don't have a firm understanding of that. And so I just wanted to say that I'm in favor of the study, to have a further conversation about it.
Mr. Shon.
Well, you can't do a PLA without a, without a study, but if you do a study, you don't have to, you don't have to go to a PLA. If a, if a, if a study were to come back and say, there's no savings from a PLA, then I would not vote for a PLA. You know, I would make that commitment. You know, it was the same thing that we did with the tax exemption for veterans. We said we would look, we would put it to the, we had an opportunity to put it to the voters, and let the voters decide, you know. That was a, and we unanimously, and when the voters were overwhelmingly in favor of that exemption, we all unanimously passed it. It would be the same thing here, I think, at least for me. The PLA study comes back and says, there's no savings, there's no savings, and I would vote, I would not press to go to have a PLA.
Reverend Pass.
In order to meet that, I think Robin stated that, at least I felt I heard her state, that it would be no second shift, third shift, so. And in that case, I still say that I'm against spending close to twenty five thousand dollars, so I would vote no.
Okay, Mr. Pass.
I'm going to go with my initial, I think, which is a vote no. I think the, our union serving children and the taxpayers are involved with that.
Ms. Lau? 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 It looks very, I thought maybe it's anyone. I don't know, I'm still, I'm torn between the two, to be honest with you. I know I have to make a decision, but I don't know. I almost think I would have to go no. Mrs. Collins?
I'm at the, I don't know how insane, however, saying what I had said before, expressing some of the viewpoint, hearing Dr. Jacobowitz, hearing Reverend Childs, I do agree, it is about the kids. And I still, I think that I'm going to say yes, just for the study.
Mr. Michael?
It's my opinion already, I'll be going now.
I hate being this. I'm going to pass, you go.
Have you seen, have you seen?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I'm going to, I'm going to.
Can I have a question?
Mr. Shon.
Yeah.
Reverend Prosser?
Yes.
Reverend Childs?
No.
Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Reverend Prosser?
No.
Sweeto? No. Ms. Lau?
I'm gone, yes. Mr. Michael?
No.
Mrs. Sheeran?
Five four defeated. Please, I was defeated, five four. The resolution was defeated, five to four. Any other new business? Is Reverend Doctor, you're now Reverend Doctor.
I have two, two things. One, the twenty twenty conference is happening on Friday. People who are coming should have gotten an email about it. Sweeto, you've got an email that they're parking pass, that's the most important thing. And Reverend Childs, you've got yours as well?
Yes.
Okay, I know that you did that, I know, Mr. Olsen, John Kidd as well. Okay, so we're all set for that, and we'll be able to, we'll have a little bit of dynamic, and we can, and so we will.
Your old core is here, but.
Yes, and my other thing is that a few weeks ago, we had asked for PTAs to send us great meetings that we could attend if they wanted us to go. We're kind of feeling that the copy and numbers are reaching enough people. In my understanding, it's the only one, the PTA responded, is that right, from that hire? And Sweeto and I are scheduled to go next week. So I may now have a conflict with the course concept that that we scheduled, I have to try to track, but that's the thing I'm asking you.
Yeah, and you may find that their interests will perk up around budget time.
Yes, okay. And they give us several dates, mine too, so.
So it could be that we go back on.
I just, I'm not sure in the course of conference.
We could bring that up, I think, to the council. Reverend Childs, I bring that up in for him, so we'll have a J person.
Okay, that's right, I mean, they have the year, it's not like.
I mean, I just contacted all the PTA presidents and relations.
Yes, I got that.
Okay, any other new business? Board member announcements.
I went to the curriculum night a few weeks ago, and feel like beyond that. And I was disappointed not to be able to go to all the sections, because I wanted to be able to hit all of them, but it was very encouraging, and it was very exciting to listen to our coaches, both math coaches and literacy coaches, talk about the way that we have adapted the curriculum from state, and I got to see the materials that they're using for instruction, and it was encouraging, and it was exciting, and I was very happy to be able to go. And huge kudos to those, that team, it was a really good team.
New business? I have a resolution. No, no, not yet. Under new business, we have a resolution, VOE thirty seven. It's a walking resolution, be resolved at kind of recommendation of Dr. Paul J. Powell, Catarina Superintendent of Schools, that the Board of Education directs the school attorney to draft a municipal cooperative agreement with the city of Kingston pursuant to sections one nineteen O and two forty four B of the general municipal law, delineating the rights and responsibilities of the school district and the city with respect to the rebuilding of the JFK playground at Hasbro Park, and authorizes the expenditure of funds for the purchase of the playground equipment, thirty thousand dollars, of which we will be reimbursed to the district from the Heisman Trophy Foundation, and authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute such agreement on behalf of the school district upon approval obtained by the school attorney. Motion? Yes. A second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor of resolution VOE thirty seven for playground equipment? Please, the players saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion varies. And now on to board member announcements. Any board member announced?
I had the opportunity to attend the playground, put on the reunion, here, right? I think it's a very challenging production for them, but they did a great job. Kudos to those who made it happen.
Very nice. Any other board announcement? Yes, I was there also, saying aye. Also, on Friday, there's going to be an assembly at Bailey Middle School for breaking the cycle, and they're going to share each other's one.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, are we coming to, yes, Mr. Shon.
I wish everyone here and watching, very happy holiday season. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Shon. And now we've reached the second public participation. Is there anyone at this point who would like to address the board? Mrs. Bowers?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I just wanted to respond to Dr. Jacobowitz's inquiry about the homework policy, as well as another policy. There are two policies, the homework policy being one, which is still on the books, and another policy fundraising, which several years ago we wrote in the books, that I think do deserve some discussion, not just at the committee level, but really at the board level, because it's far more than just putting verbiage on paper, it's really deserving of a philosophical discussion of what we want our homework policy to look like. And Mrs. Sheeran has been very involved in those discussions in the past. She's willing her eyes, anticipating another one, but it is a discussion that needs to take place. And also the fundraising, you know, what do we want that to look like in our district? And this is beyond the issue of whether or not we can use food and fundraisers, that's being dealt with in the wellness policy, but really a philosophical discussion of, you know, who we want our students can shaking in front of hand or foot, and so on and so forth. So if, as a group, as a board, or individually, you just want to give some thought to that and let Mrs. Collins know, or Mr. Kerner, or email me, and we can have those discussions and really begin to craft that policy, but again, or those two policies, but again, I think it really will take some philosophical direction from the school board and administration. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to address the board? Seeing no hands, and having no need for second executive session. Are there any motion to return?
A second?
All favor? Aye.